Good evening, everyone. I'm calling the leading of the open hearing regarding the fiscal year 24 budget to order. And first, we'll take a roll call vote. Kyle? You just have to say present.
Yes.
Okay, Carl?
Did somebody tell me or you find what I'm saying?
That you're here?
That you're here. This is known as a roll call vote. No, you wouldn't.
So, present. Present.
Nancy?
Yep.
Dennis?
Present.
Jim?
Present.
Sarah?
Present.
Bonnie is present. Wait, I just heard something Vataki. Was that Becky? Does that mean that Art's there?
No, I think we're just, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that was just background. Okay.
I think I would just mute Kyle. Yeah, there you go.
Is it correct that the only school committee member appearing by Zoom is Kyle?
Correct. Okay, we know that Art is not coming this evening and David is not coming this evening. So if Kim comes in late, we will just add her to the roster. All right.
No hydration for me. Okay.
Nothing could ever be in the way of my.
Happy to share that.
It's so loud. All right, the chairperson hereby informs the committee and the audience members of the recording of this meeting. Recording, recording. Good evening. I am Bonnie Silvers, Chair of the Southernburg Year Regional School District School Committee, and I will be presiding over this public hearing today on March 2, 2023. Once the public hearing has commenced, there can be no motions or votes until the hearing has officially concluded. The purpose of this public hearing is to invite comments from members of the public regarding the proposed fiscal year 24 budget that is pending before this school committee. The committee will hear comments from those present who wish to speak for, against, or neither, for or against the fiscal year 24 budget, and that includes any public that zooming in. Through the chair, committee members, that's through me, may ask questions of any person giving comments today. Please be mindful that all comments are public and are available to all once it is presented. Persons providing any comments at the public hearing are advised that the hearing is being recorded. We have CTSB as well as our internal. Is being recorded for broadcast. If you wish to provide any comments, please state your name, residence, and the organization you represent, if any, and sign in at the podium. We have a mic over there. Public comments will be heard in the following order. Anyone speaking in favor, anyone speaking in opposition, anyone speaking neither for or against, just general comments. School committee comments and questions. So we go last, guys. All right. I've opened the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing formally. Welcome in. I will entertain a motion to publicly open the meeting at 5:37. That's a motion by Dennis, seconded by Jim. I will do a roll call vote for opening. Why don't we start with you, Sarah?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Bennett. And Kyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so that's unanimous. Is there anyone from the public? Oh, you want to, you actually want to present?
Well, I might want me to present unless people want to comment.
Absolutely. I have to say, I actually enjoyed, to some extent, reading all of this. It was, this is my editorializing. You did a really thorough job.
Thank you. So, as always with everything, this is a team effort. We're going to bring up the PowerPoint presentation that I will walk the, everyone through, but there's also a budget booklet that puts together some additional information, which we posted out on the district website. There's some here for anybody who might need a copy in the audience, but it's also available to the public. So we can go.
One who wants it right now?
I think they got others on the way in. You can go to the next, oh yeah, that was just really my new visual. See that? Yeah. Anyway, all right, so we will go right into it. I always like to say, these are our future early college students. This is my read-aloud, my pre-K read-aloud group, who has their early college beanies on, representing our future graduates. But I like to just say that our guiding principles for the work that we do haven't changed. Our philosophies are the same. We build our budget based on our district vision and the district strategy for continuous improvement, all with the goal of sustaining educational excellence. We are very mindful and work very hard to develop assessments that are manageable to our member towns. We want to make sure that we're providing programming and staffing levels that support continuous improvement in the most cost-effective way. We want to be transparent and open with our communication about all of that. We want to be very strategic with our resource allocation. We're always trying to be proactive instead of reactive, and we're always doing this based on data-driven decisions and based on what's best for students. That's the center of everything that we do. The next slide is just a copy. I expect everyone to have memorized that, and there'll be a quiz. But this is our strategy for continuous improvement. This is what I refer to as our North Star. This is where all of our goals come from, our action steps about how we're going to improve education for our students, and work with our faculty and staff and the school committee and the community. So that's also always available on our website, and we try to refer to it as often as possible. We don't veer off of this very much. It's, we're committed to this work. It's not something that can be done quickly in a year. This is something that takes significant time, energy, and investment, and so you can always know what we're doing and why we're doing it from this document. So, the state budget process is, next slide, thank you, is just barely underway. You can, I had to sneak in a slide as the governor came out with a little bit more of detail yesterday, which gave us no time to, you know, because we're due by today. But that's okay. We're kind of used to it, and we're getting good at it in regionals. But I added this next slide to talk a little bit about what the governor had to, had to say, so we can go to the next slide. You can see there's a whole lot of steps that are still coming, so we do our very best to provide you the best estimates, but there might be some changes by the time we actually get to what the governor signs. So, some highlights from the governor's budget that were released yesterday. So, there's an inflation factor that's in the foundation budget, which the actual factor this year is even higher than last year. It's at 9.1%. And again, they made the decision to cap it at 4.5. So already, you can see we're starting with a big gap that is going to, expected to be covered by us. Our minimum per pupil aid is still $30 per student. The regional transportation line is at a 90% reimbursement rate. I will tell you that we do not have that in our estimates. I would take a bet right now that it probably won't stay this high, so that's okay. But right now, it did come out at a 90% reimbursement rate. The school lunch program was not funded, and as you know, the last couple of years it has been funded at 100% and has been very much needed and supported in the communities, and at this point, it had, they have decided to not continue to do that. Our rural aid funding, this is where I'm saying we still have a lot of work to do on advocacy, because the rural aid recommendation was that it was 60 million, or about 61 million that would fund it to the levels of, you know, the Student Opportunities Act type of funding, and we are up $2 million to $7.5 million from last year's $5.5 million, which is about a 36% increase. The regionalization grant that had been out for many years has, the governor continued to not go ahead and fund that moving forward for FY '24. So, as I like to point out, and I have a wonderful superintendent colleague who already did some of this number, data crunching, I'd like to say. He put doom and gloom in his, but I left that part out. But this is why we still need some advocacy, because even though this is record funding, you can see that 71% of this new Chapter 70 money is going to 32 districts out of the 320. 93% of all this new money is going to 106 districts. There's various channels by which that's happening. So, the bottom line is, there's 212 of us, or 67% of all districts in the Commonwealth that are sharing a combined 7% of all new Chapter 70 money. So, I think there's still a significant amount of advocacy to do about appropriate funding levels for districts and children in Massachusetts. So, the next page is just a kind of a quick view of the timeline, all the different work that we've been doing, starting last fall, all the way through what it takes to get the budgets passed at town meeting. But these last several months, we've really tried to work with all of our internal stakeholders to put together what you're going to see tonight, and I'm very, very proud of the work by everybody. So you can see, it's two pages of our timeline, so there's a lot to do, and we're down at today's public hearing. So we're in the home stretch before we head to town meetings, hopefully with the support of our member towns. Okay, so let's get to it. Our FY '24 budget overview. So our proposal this year, preliminary proposal, is $19,211,533, which is a $737,393 increase, or 3.99%. Our capital budget is at a slight decrease of 6.11%, and our debt paydown is minus 3.02%. This has already been presented in several other forms, but this gives, at least, I tried to throw in these slides that you certainly can't read during the, during the public hearing on the screen, but if anybody wants to look back, it's here. But these are, it's a list, actually, of what we're proposing for our capital and what we call our, almost our preventative maintenance or our ongoing upkeep of our facilities. And it's a five-year glance, but the column in yellow is what we're proposing to do this year. So we have about $322,500 worth of projects that we are proposing to keep our buildings the way they are. This district is consistent and very responsible in taking care of the facilities, and I think really people should be commended for investing in these, in these schools. Okay, so what is, what do we have going on in capital? The request came in at about $360,000. We either were able to take care of some now, or move some to a year to come up with the amount that we are putting forward, which is the $322,000. We are still waiting to actually complete. We saved our ESAR funds to finish up the HVAC replacement project. Again, there were delays that were out of our hands, but we're still coming in on the same budget and timeframe. It'll happen this summer, which really makes it easier. Most of the kids will be out of the building, but we were still waiting for the supplies or the units to be ready, which at the earliest was going to be April now. So this has been a while coming, but it's going to happen. Again, I think it's important to note that we used our ESAR funding to do this so that our communities would not have to borrow and add to their debt service. Overall, we're focusing on upgrading flooring, some asphalt work at the campuses. We need some vehicles and ground equipment, safety and security around technology cameras, and maybe some door replacements. We also applied, there was a state grant, which I think every one of my colleagues also applied for, to replace doors. That came out, there's about a $2.9 million available, and we put our name in the hat for a piece of that. So again, our overall capital expenditures is a 6.11 decrease for the upcoming year. You can see we are just about, a little less than halfway done with our debt on the roof boiler project from back in 2017, and the amount is there. And then the next page is just a visual representation of paying down that debt, where we are. So, this is our change in enrollment from FY '23 to FY '24. Overall, we have a decrease of five students, and this is the foundation enrollment that's reported at DUCY. And you can see the change by town, which is going to then change the share of the town's assessment. So this chart gives you an idea of how that, that change in the number of students will affect their assessment moving forward by town. And the next slide is the change in assessment in dollar as a result, and this is before we put it into the formula that does, has the smoothing effect. As, so this is prior to the actual full formula being applied, but you can see how it translated in dollars from last year to this year, the change in, the change in percentage. So our change in assessments, the assessment increase is $510,043, or 3.45%. So what's in this budget? As we talk about, we talked about our philosophy and our commitment to our communities and our students and faculty and staff. The overall increase to the budget is proposed at 3.99%, or $737,393. Since 2017, our budget increases on average have been 2.05%. With this year, we are, it's gelling my average, but it's not bad still at 2.72%.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but could you put the previous slide back up just for a few seconds that showed the different towns and the shares of the budget for this year?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
I'm good, man.
You're good? Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
So, this budget proposal does use grant funding to keep our late buses in. We talked about, we weren't sure if we were going to be able to do that, but we are able to do that. I wanted to confirm before I put that in here, but we think that's a very important part for our students to have that opportunity, so that they can access all of our programming here, as well as extracurricular activities or supports that are available. This has funding for ongoing professional development, external coaching in both our math and ELA initiatives, really district-wide. We have ongoing implementation of our program enhancements, so our internship programming, our early college initiative, and our innovation pathway programming. We are not going to read this slide a lot. It's very, there's a lot of information on here, but this is talking about our early childhood programming, which is still very robust and very active. We are continuing to implement our best practices based on DUCY and the Department of Early Education for our pre-K through 3. We have developed and implemented a standards-based report card at the pre-K level with plans to expand that to all levels. We have our registration and our screening process that has been for both pre-K and K now, and we are doing the mandated dyslexia screening for all students' grades K through 2, and we're doing this in June so that we can make early, or decisions and inform decisions about where we're placing our students in our programs. So let's talk about the revenue. So, Chapter 70, we received $2 million, just a little over $2 million for the 645 students. This is the amount of money that the state believes it costs to educate a student in the district, so we got $30 per student, which is an increase of $38,850 over last year. Our regional transportation reimbursement rate, we have it estimated at $937,137. We came in at a little, around 80%, which is what we were advised in a lot of my organizations at this point, which is an increase of $148,000, and that's really the result because our costs increased so much. So, you're getting reimbursement on a larger increase in costs. The town assessments, as I mentioned, is an increase of approximately $510,000, or 3.45%. Our tuition, which is from other districts, has increased to approximately $127,500 this year, and our Medicaid reimbursement revenue, we're estimating to be about the same at $70,000. So our school choice fund is a, you know, revolving fund, which is a moving target all year. So when I'm giving you these, these are estimates as of where they are right now. We talk about what we estimate we're going to need to apply, but we don't always need to apply all of this, so, but for right now, with what we knew at the time, this is, these are the decisions we made. We were applying $755,000 of our expenditures to the school choice fund, which is about what we normally, maybe a little bit higher than we normally allocate, estimating that we'll have a balance of a little over $200,000 in our school choice fund account to be replenished as it does cyclically each year. For our excess and deficiency fund, that is, we're proposing that we use $725,000 out of our excess and deficiency fund. This is almost, you know, what is left over if you have either, if you come in with less expenses than you anticipated, or we really don't want it to be the other way, because then we have a different problem to talk about, but. And then that amount is certified by the state, and our E&amp;D was certified at $844,724, and so recently that the school committee will have to confirm that tonight, which is just shy of the 5% maximum level that a regional school district can have. It's around 4.6%. I just wanted to demonstrate that this is typical of what has been the practice in this district. We had a similar certified balance around $864,000 last year, and that's after contributing $700,000. So we're in the same range. So as far as our biggest expenditure is salaries, we are in year two of a three-year contract with all of our bargaining agreements. The cost of living increase for next year is a 2.25%. Our benefits, our retirement contributions to, for our retirees, is about a 3% increase. We're still facing, as you can see, steep inflation in our supplies, materials, and services. The state inflation rate, when I did my research, not the foundation budget one, was around 6.4%, 6.5%. Again, highlighting that the state is funding, capping the funding formula at 4.5%. Our transportation contract is in year two of three-year contract with the increase for next year, which is already on top of the hefty increase in the prior year, is another 6.5%. Our health insurance increase is estimated to be about 7%. Energy costs are somewhere around 8%, which is why we're still working on pursuing a solar project to offset some of the costs here on the Sheffield campus. And our contracted services, just like everybody else is facing or seeing, increases and delays a lot of the time. I think something really important to note is that as we move away from having access to all of the ESAR funding that we had over the last several years as we worked through COVID, and due to the outstanding work of this district and the administration, we have been able to secure quite a bit of competitive grant funding. So, we only had, right, as of right now, about $130,000 difference in available grant funding, which is really incredible. And so that's been incredibly helpful in how we were able to manage this proposal in this economy. So, the next page shows the proposed assessments for next year. You can see the number that was proposed for FY '23, the change for FY '24, and this is after it's put through the entire formula. The proposed change in the assessments broken out by town are shown here, with the total being roughly about a 3.45%. So I always like to just make sure I talk about what is it that we are investing in, and I think significant expansion of these incredibly important programs for our students, the early college, the internship, the innovation pathways opportunities. We're really investing in our own faculty and staff, our district sustainability, our students, with the hope of not just, you know, building skills, but reinvesting in our communities and our local economy by providing these opportunities for our students. We're investing in after-school programming, clubs, activities, the homework center, late buses, making sure that we support our students and families in these incredibly challenging times. We have a lot of in-district and inclusive programming for our students. There is a huge issue facing a lot of districts, and we're not one of them who were affected, but not to the degree where there's, out-of-district tuitions are for, have a 14% increase. It's burying districts, but we have managed to keep those numbers down and keep kids where they are most successful and close to home. Our early childhood programming in district needs, social emotional skills, and like I said, mental health and supports for our families and our, and our school community. And most of all, we're investing in our kids, what they, what their interests are and what their needs are, so that they can be successful members of our communities when they're, when they're done. So, any questions?
Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor, from the public, who wants to speak in favor of the budget? If you are in the Zoom audience, just do the raise hand feature. But I'll start with, go right ahead. If you can come up to the mic, please.
Julie Hannah from Sheffield Bayans Committee. Want to thank you for your very hard work. Clearly, you're figuring out ways to keep costs to towns manageable, which is greatly appreciated. There's a few things. There's a few things that we have questions about. We're looking at the boiler, for example, the pellets, how that number went up this year. So that's a question. I don't know if it's appropriate right now, but how the total numbers went up, and the trend is for the numbers to go down as the debt is paid off. And I'm wondering what made that change, or if you can comment on that.
Well, you're saying in the costs associated with the boiler?
Yeah.
There has been quite a bit of repair, actually, on the boilers. I don't think they have been, there's a lot of, they are a challenge to manage. We just got some new, I think, some technical pieces, some new software, I think, that was associated with management of that.
There was some software and some hardware?
Some hardware that had to be replaced. And I will say that that has been an ongoing, but I think just energy costs in general have been up. So I don't know that, but the hope is that eventually they get regulated. It took us a while to also get the approval process through the state, I would say more than a while, kind of a really long process. So hopefully, now that we're catching up, we'll start to see that.
But would that repair be part of the original debt service, though?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I was, I'm sorry, actually, not from this, but from the budget book that went out today, we saw numbers that went up, and we were curious about that.
Okay, I'll have to look at specific.
So that might be something we'll do offline in this particular.
Yes, because it might be something different. Yeah.
We're very curious about that. But you're clearly working very hard. Other question, we found our town health insurance went up about 1%, and you're saying 7%.
Yep.
I'm not sure what the difference, were there changes in programs or offering?
So this is, we participate in a joint purchase group. So they make a decision, and I don't know, Chris, our business, I don't know if you want to talk about the reason that they determined that, but usually what they do is they, when I was the person who oversaw on the joint purchase group, they kind of assess what they assume the risk is going to be for next year, look at where the rates have been. We have not had an increase for several years. So this is probably one of those where they took, they are being maybe a little conservative, and then they tend to do things like do a premium holiday and give backs and reduce the rate. People make different decisions. I might not have done, if I was in charge, you know, crystal ball, 2020, I might have had smaller increments, like a 1% or a 2% and not done the premium holiday, because then every once in a while, you get that shift. But Chris, do you have anything to add? Because you're usually the one who attends the meetings.
I do, yes. A lot of that increase is in retired, retired employees' insurance, where it was underbudgeted in the prior year, and so we had to bring that up to a correct level. And so because of that, it's not just a 1% increase, we had to bring it up to where it needed to be.
So it sounds like we're making up for an error from a previous year.
Well, it could have been an error in an estimate, or it could have been just the experience didn't go like they thought, so.
Just to add to that, I know from people I've spoken with around the district, the pandemic has really hit retirements. So, well, throughout the United States, and the higher-than-anticipated retirement rate. I know Beth heard at one of her superintendent's meetings, you can correct me, that there are places looking for 30-something teachers in a district because of the number of people leaving. So when we went, we've had this joint purchasing throughout the county, no one anticipated, when they went into all of this, the hit, that's one of the hits that we're getting in terms of the pandemic, that retirement rate.
Great. Those are my questions for tonight. Thank you.
I'll note that other one and get back to you on them.
Okay.
Thanks, Julie.
Anything else for day? Go right ahead.
Renee Wood, Sheffield Select Board. I echo Julie's comments on, given what the cost of living increases have been and inflation, et cetera, that this budget is coming in where it is. Very greatly appreciate that. I also want to, I just want to have a few questions on the debt for the boiler, et cetera. Is that refigured every year based on the proportion of students that each town has in school that year? Or when that debt was incurred, was the percentage allocated to each town set?
I think it's set based on incurrence, but we can.
When they laid it out, that's what it was. So we would know for each year.
It looks like that's also a fixed interest rate rather than a variable? So it's fixed? Okay.
That was one of the decisions we also had to make when we incurred the bound.
That's what I also thought I remembered, but I just wanted to be sure. That kind of dovetails a little bit with what Julie was asking, so we'll hear back from you on that. It looks like for this budget, as well as last year's budget, there was quite a bit of E&amp;D that was moved over to keep the contributions that would need to be made, the assessments to the town in order. I also know that you can only keep a certain amount of E&amp;D, if I remember that from past years. So there's been around $700,000 each of the last two years. What does it look like for this year? Because excess, you know, E&amp;D is kind of, in a sense, a savings account, and it's, in some ways, it could be looked at as an overassessment in the budget, or that the budget was set, and then pencils were even sharper, and somehow the budget came out to require less money because there was E&amp;D left over. Do I have that correct?
It's not really. I think it's more, it's not really a savings account as it is, you know, when you budget, you're doing an estimate. And so right now, it changes quite a bit. We may get grant funding. We got, right in the middle, you get hit with COVID, and you got something else that's that, so it could be that you were going to do a project and you didn't do that project. So, you know, it could be a variety of reasons. You're doing your best guess at the time. So to me, the fact that we're contributing it back to the communities, even though I can actually hold in a quote "savings account" for an emergency, up to 5%, we almost never do that because we do feel that.
Well, we do appreciate that.
I mean, so we don't look at it that way. We look at it, technically, I really comfortably would prefer to have about 3% in there as a safety valve, just in case something catastrophic was to go there. And then we'd have to come back to you anyway in order to access that after the budget's approved. But I think it's been important, and in the time that I've been here, these have been challenging financial years. And I think if we do get some type of benefit, we try to give it back and contribute as a source. And I think that's the philosophy I've always had as a.
Well, we look at the same, at free cash is the same, and there's always a level that you want to keep. It's just interesting that the last two years, which I think have been extremely challenging, have led to a large E&amp;D amount.
It's actually been my whole time, to be honest. It's about the same pattern.
Good goal. And then finally, the governor just came out with her revised budget, and I know you haven't had a chance to put those numbers in here. It did look like she was being much more generous in some ways, or possibly not.
Really, the only one is the transportation.
Well, transportation's a big bill. Will we see those numbers reflected in this budget prior to the time it comes, or the budget that's approved tonight will be on the town warrant?
My guess is that it'll be on the town warrant because my gut is that by the time it goes all the way through committee, we won't be seeing that 90%. I mean, I was basically told by the quote "businessperson" at the state level that I wouldn't go above 80%. So I feel very uncomfortable giving a false sense of that holding where it is. You know, I'd rather have it, again, if that happens, it'll go through and it'll be part of the E&amp;D.
I can understand everything that you've said, and I appreciate, again, the work that you and your colleagues have done, and I hope that the school committee tonight will approve this budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Kilmer, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Nothing, but just to follow up with what was already said, you've done a great job, and I think the budget should be approved.
Well, when you say, I have to say, Beth's team at getting, really getting the faculty involved this year.
Every year.
Every, but it's been a major emphasis as we now have these career pathways, and we look for different ways to make sure all of our kids are getting what they need. We're proud of the fact that what's come to us has been, because we know what it's, live in Sheffield, we know what it's like, what we pay, and we know what the investment is for our students. So thank you for what you said.
I think Tara may have.
And we have, is that Tara up the left-hand corner?
It is.
Okay, Tara, go to it.
Sorry, I couldn't be there, but I had a meeting that was before you guys. Just a clarification question. So the final budget is $192,153,3, right? And you've applied $1,480,000 to that, to get it to that? You applied $725,000 E&amp;D and $755,000 choice, is that what I heard?
So.
Is that my, so the budget is not, the budget is really $20,691,533, and then you subtracted the $1,480,000?
No. So.
Okay. So that's why I'm asking for further?
No, that's fine. No, it's fine. And I also want to make a differentiation between application of E&amp;D as a revenue source versus charging expenditures to a school choice fund. They're two separate things. It's not, you can't wrap that up, and it doesn't do the same thing on the budget. So, but the, the application of the E&amp;D, so if you wanted to add the $725,000 to get what the budget was, that would be, it would be higher, okay? But the, those total expenditures, you're just charging them to the school choice account, which is an account that can only be used for school choice expenses. It's not exactly the same thing.
Okay, all right. And I have one other question.
Sure.
There seems to be a, some kind of a difference of like 30 students. I asked for the enrollment figures beginning of February, and what I was sent was total 615 students. And DESI has 615 students, but you were saying tonight and on some of your literature that there's 645.
So that's based on the foundation enrollment.
So what, where's?
So the foundation enrollment, October 1. So I'm guessing, I'm guessing what you got was from Lynette, which I think the difference is DESI and what we do doesn't match, and I'm guessing that's because you're using October 1 of the previous year, and there's a rounding factor. But you're using October 1 of the previous year. So in some cases, if a student moves in or choices in or out, once they become your student, they then become in the number the next year. So we're always kind of off a little bit in our timing. So our actual, and you're using the prior year's SIMS data for the foundation enrollment. So there is going to be a slight difference that never really matches to DESI.
Okay, so how, can you provide the updated numbers? Because obviously, then the numbers that were sent out that I received don't reflect the correct number of children in grades and schools, in different schools and grades, et cetera. Is there a?
No, they do.
Enrollment sheet that will give us that updated numbers to make it 645?
It will never be 645, because you're, 645 won't be what it is. So you're back a whole year, you're back last October 1. And so you'd have to go through, I think you could try to sit with Lynette and do a reconciliation, but you're never going to match exactly. And if you actually look in the DESI formula and you click on the box, and DESI, Chris, our businessperson, and I were just looking in there, like for Alford, it says there's 18.4462 because there's a factor of a point of a child for pre-K. There are different factors in the way the DESI calculates their foundation enrollment number and what we do.
Okay.
We're actually doing, counting children in seats each month in each school.
I saw that when at the.
It's very, it is a tricky, annoying.
At the mass conference, not this year. They had the college acceptance and the college enrollment off completely.
Very different than we.
And then it turns out, when I brought up that topic, other people started to look at theirs, and they said, ours isn't right. So it's what DESI uses and what reality may not coincide.
They just use different factors, and we actually talked about, you know, should we, should we try to put 18.42567 children in there and round it up so that people wouldn't feel like we were reporting different numbers? But it gets a little, this is what, if you actually look on the site, that they're using to, to fund us in the formula. So we want to stick with that for this purpose. But I understand exactly what she's saying. It can be very frustrating.
Thank you.
Yes, Julie?
A quick follow-up, does, I think it only include pre-K numbers?
It includes an increment. That's where you get the point, you know, and I don't, I can't tell you I understand exactly, but that's what we were looking at the other day.
Because they're shorter.
Yeah.
Okay. But we're working on that. That's one of our things with Smitty, get our kids. Is any further comment in favor of positive? In which case, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak in opposition to our That's, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak just in general regarding this topic? Okay. In that case, if there aren't any other comments, I am going to, having heard all comments, do the following. Seeing no other board comments or public comments, this public hearing on March 2, 2023, is now closed, and I will take a motion for, to close the hearing.
I make a motion to close the hearing?
Okay. Do we have a second on that? Okay, we have a second. And I'll take a roll call. Why don't I start over here, Sarah?
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair. Made and seconded.
Right.
And you are, you are precluded?
School committee.
Yeah, and that was my question.
The school committee. It's not on my cheat sheet. Therefore, if there is anyone on the school committee who would like to speak to our budget, Carl?
I have several things. One, and I know that I'm leaving something out, but I can't be the only person in the district who is confused by this. On the, on the page entitled Fiscal Year 24 Budget Overview, it has revenue, chapter, and I'm reading exactly what it says, Chapter 70, $2,65,241, 645 students, $30 per student. Now, it can't possibly be $30 per student for 645 students, because that doesn't equal $2 million. In fact, it doesn't, it doesn't, pardon me?
The increase per student. So that's where you get the $38,000.
No.
Our total amount is $2 million that we receive from town.
No, but that's not my issue. And something is left out, or I'm an idiot. And both of those things can be true. 645 students times $30 per student is about $19,000. Now, there's a discrepancy between $19,000 and $2,65,000. And why is, why is that? If somebody asks 30, if somebody says you are getting Chapter 78 of $30 per student for 645. of thirty dollars per student for six hundred and forty-five students, that's about twenty thousand dollars, not two million dollars. So, there's a factor of about a hundred that it's off by. Where, how does that happen?
I don't know what you're saying, but I will say this.
I can answer that.
Go ahead. I know, I know what he's, I do know what he's saying on the nineteen, I didn't, I'm saying, go ahead, you do it, Chris.
Sure. So, last year, and it was after the beginning of the fiscal year, the state made it sixty dollars per student instead of thirty, and so that changed the chapter seventy by a little bit, and that's why the increase is thirty-eight thousand dollars instead of nineteen thousand.
It, it. This factors in what we received. That we were, that was determined after this point last year.
Correct.
So, that adds the nineteen, three fifty, the extra twenty thou, almost twenty thousand comes from what was not out, reported earlier.
Can you just answer my question?
It was, it was given, they decided to, they had it as a supplemental last year, they had thirty dollars per student under school choice, which was the nineteen thousand, then they had a supplemental amount. They decided yesterday, when it came out, to add the, the whole sixty dollars to last year's amount in the total Chapter Seventy line, which makes our difference thirty-eight this year.
Instead of the nineteen.
Instead of the nineteen, but if you add six forty-five times thirty, that's what you get, nineteen.
I, I'm, I'm gonna, I still don't understand it, I'm gonna drop it unless Charles, sitting back there, has a, has a nine-year-old who's still at school who could come in and explain it to me.
I will be happy to talk to you about it after.
Okay.
Do you have anything else, Carl?
Yeah, I do. I, I'm a little bit disturbed by the fact that our, and it isn't spelled out here, but our per pupil cost in this district is in the top ninety-five percent of per pupil costs in, in the Commonwealth. That is, there are only, there are about ninety-five percent, ninety-five percent of the three hundred and forty districts or three hundred and thirty, whatever it is, that ninety-five percent of them have a lower per pupil cost than we do, and that's troubling. And with, and it's only going to get larger. It's going to get larger because, in general, decreased enrollment results in higher per pupil cost. So, I'm concerned about it, that's just a comment, it's not, it's not something that I want to argue about. And, and finally, no, not finally, two things. There's a ten percent decline in Monterey enrollment between last year and this year. That's significant. If we had a ten percent decline in student enrollment overall, we'd be in big trouble. Has anybody explored the reason for the decline in Monterey's enrollment being that significant?
I, I mean, it's not a lot, it's not a lot of students.
Yeah, it's like somebody moved, it's like one kid.
Carl, it's one kid.
That's my question.
Yeah.
Here's a question.
What is your question?
Anybody in the school administration? When you say it's not a lot, of course it's not a lot, but if, if, if Alford had two students and one left, that would be a fifty percent decline, and you say, well, that's not a lot, but a fifty percent decline as, as a percentage of the enrollment is a lot. Now, no other, no other town, none of the other four towns, had a change of anywhere approaching ten percent. And I want to know, what I want to know is, did the school, someone in the school administration explore the reasons for that? You could say, it could be, I mean, as Kim said, somebody moved. Well, yes, maybe somebody moved, but also the possibility is that those eight students are being homeschooled. That's not the same thing as moving, and one could reasonably infer from those eight students going to homeschooling that, that a significant, significant number of students from Monterey decided that homeschooling was better than going to a public school. I, I don't know the answer, but I'd like to know if, if the school was concerned with the, with finding out the answer, or answers.
I hear what you're saying. And so, every time a student, you know, every time we have people who unenroll or make a different decision, we do have people who move. I had, I had three inquiries last, in the last two weeks around, if I move to Connecticut, can I still come to the school? Because I can't afford, we're thinking about, should we go over the line? I mean, this is something that is a much wider conversation than just what's happening in the school district. People are struggling, and they're looking for ways, they're moving for jobs, they're, we do have some homeschooled kids who haven't made the choice to come back yet. There's a lot of that, but each month, when you get your enrollment report, Lynette tries to give you a sense of where those students went and why, if we can get that information. So.
And the only reason we wouldn't be able to get is, is that the parent said, I don't, I wish not to provide that information.
Or they just leave and, you know.
Carl, I brought this up a year ago, and I, and because of the question of what was causing movement, and sometimes parents will not explain. We know, we know of at least one case in Monterey, because the parent is now working in Great Barrington, the option was, we want to, I can drop my child off, and I'm taking her, for now, I am taking her out of the district. So, the parent will say that. Or there are children, we know, who are, have not returned to in-person school and opted for home, the parents have opted for homeschooling. But I know, because the school committee brought this up as an issue, there has been work on the part of the administration to find out, because we want to know if there's something we should be doing to keep that, to keep them here.
Well, that was my, that really was the, was the basis of my question.
Exactly.
Is there an interview or an attempt to, to ascertain the reason that a student who was here in 2022 is not here in 2023?
Yes, there is. You can, you know, this was an issue that we faced, and it's part of the reason that there was such a push, please, let's do whatever we can to keep the late buses, because that's very important to parents who say, I'll keep my child here, drop them off at Big Y.
And, and.
But also because our principals and our administrators care, they actually make those calls, they, what can I do to help you? Is there anything I can do to change your mind?
And then I, and I, the final.
It's freezing, yeah.
Thank you.
Tampa, interesting choice. Okay, now, a final question, but I, I want, I mean, I'm, I know that I must be sounding to the uninitiated as, as being negative about this, and I don't mean to, I'm going to, I'm on my town's finance committee, we.
Get to, get to the point, Carl.
Okay. The question of enrollment, foundation enrollment and an actual enrollment. Now, I'm going to paraphrase Denzel Washington in, in the movie Philadelphia. To answer me this question as if I'm seven years old. There are three schools in the district, Eggermont School, well, the combined school here at the, on Berkshire School Road, and New Marlborough. Now, if you had a hundred percent attendance tomorrow, Friday, March 3, is it Friday, March 3 tomorrow? Yeah. If you had a hundred percent attendance and you, and you had a roll call, like they do in prison, so everybody comes out, you know, at, at eight forty-five?
I was gonna say.
And you counted them, wouldn't that be the district's enrollment? Not eighteen point two seven students?
I, I can't agree with you more, I am not in charge of what the foundation enrollment in the formula is, I totally agree with you, but that's what it is.
How many students go to school?
I tell you, six hundred and fifteen, or six hundred and thirty, or whatever I give you every month.
It's on the chart, we receive every month.
Okay.
We go by the actual human beings, the breathing human beings.
I don't think that's an outrageous position to take, by the way.
Well, we continue to take that. I am telling you, they, nobody could figure out the college attendance when I went to a workshop, because the state used numbers that didn't relate to what the members of school committees were there. Is there anyone else from the school committee to comment? Is that you, Kim?
Your indulgence, by the way.
Yes, you from Monterey. I know a couple families moved out of our town. I also know that one student actually did early enrollment up at Simon's Rock after she left here, because she was accepted in. So, that would explain some of those numbers.
Most fifty percent.
So, pretty much fifty percent of them. And then I know every year, having gone to New Marlborough Central, that some people who do work in Great Barrington, it happened in all three of my children's classes, do choose to take their kids to the other school district, because they work there, and it's easier for them to take transportation to their jobs and be with their parents versus the parents trying to run home and get them off a bus. So, that's, I've seen it in Monterey.
Yes, okay. Any other school committee members who would like to comment? All right, I'm going back to, quick, close the meeting. I'll take a, a motion to close the hearing. We, okay, we have a second on that, I don't remember, did, Kim, did you do it?
I seconded.
Oh, Nancy did. Okay, we have a motion, roll call.
Yes, yes, yes.
We have two yeses, Jim?
Yes.
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 Oh.
Kyle.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Bonnie, yes. Thank you all, thank you for the input, thank you for the questions.
Thank you for the support.
And, and thank you definitely for the support, and obviously, you're welcome to stay for the next round.
Look at them, they're like.
Don't give us that look.
Don't leave us.
Thank you.
They're getting out of here so quickly.
She's fainting from hunger.
Yeah.
Someone told me different time to do it.
I never said that, but I said, go eat.
I said, anything, oh, nothing's coming in. I said, oh, there are going to be snack, I don't have to have, all right, take a momentary break, that's it.
I was just asking if you were starting right up or not, you do whatever you need to do.
Where's the snack cart?
Yeah.
I just can't, I mean, the, the amount of maintenance I'm dealing with here with this group is a lot, it's a lot.
Catering budget for the school committee.
There isn't one.
And you, when I first was on the school committee, they would roll in sandwiches, bake, everything.
We do technically use like.
We're trying to get to three nine nine, people, three nine nine.
We do every year. It's young. And I know for a fact.
We have the availability to have that happen, we haven't had them have to go yet.
The school committee's here, does anyone need a break?
We have funding to do that, one in.
Okay.
We lost Carl.
But we have funding and the grant to do that.
Well.
If we get to that point.
It's okay, we can go.
We still have a quorum.
Yes! I like the way you think, Bonnie.
Hey, it's long enough as it is.
No, it's just, I don't think, right, I think right now, they're.
I think we gotta get, uh.
They're being serviced here.
That's what Chris is working on, right?
They take class here, the professors come here.
Recording in progress.
All right, haven't seen you all in so long.
Yeah, James DePisa's on, I noticed that. Sandy's on, everybody's on, yeah.
She's not gonna, she's gonna, the camera.
All right, so Chris, did we get Kyle back?
There he is.
I, I, I have to walk to work.
I, uh-oh.
Is there money in the budget to fix that water fountain out there? We don't have, we don't have our catering, and we don't have food.
Donations to the water was in the budget.
Bring a water bottle.
What's in the teacher's lounge for food? Oh, my goodness, Kim, out to Colorado? I'm starving.
Absolutely.
What about culinary arts? What about culinary arts?
Fundos.
Yeah, our wonderful culinary arts.
They did a lovely trip today.
Yeah?
Is there leftovers?
Okay, and then, based on that, let's, let's see if we can move our show along. All right?
We got cookies.
Whoa.
You want to thank Mr. Miller for that, yeah?
They're welcome, and so, if you want one, they're in the box, and I brought napkins.
There is a cookie.
Probably not going to be any left by the time they get over there, but maybe, you might get.
Somebody want to split one?
All right, with that in mind, I am calling meeting number one thousand six hundred and forty-four to order at six thirty-seven. All right, I will entertain a motion on the minutes. Okay, passing it along here. Oh, thank you. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any corrections, comments?
It's the most beautiful set of minutes I've ever seen.
Wonderful.
Okay.
Let me find it. Yeah, paragraph or item numbered thirteen on page five of the minutes. Okay, thirteen A specifically. Vote to add Superintendent Dr. Regalbudo as second signatory to SB RSD bank accounts. That was my motion, seconded by Art Bataki, and the vote, as indicated in the minutes, appears to have been unanimous, it was not.
It was not.
It was not. David, David Rogers-Terry voted no.
All right, that was one of the items on my list.
That's it, that's all I have.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Um, okay.
Yep, I, I got him as far as I could, but you were reading.
On age six, it's the Eagle Fund, not the Eagles Fund. Um, now, let me find the item, it is. Um, God, it was improper, it's E, now, let me see which one, E where? Oh, yes, on page eight, page six, E improperly elected school committee members to the school district council, it wasn't that council, it was a liar. So, it has, that has to be changed.
Should I say?
And under future agenda items, we have, for the, we said to, we specifically said for future meetings, not that the audit and guidance report would be on the next meeting.
No.
No?
We did, yes, we said for future meetings.
For future meetings, so that should be changed. And then, in terms of warrants, it just has to be made clear, I'm trying to find the warrant one, that it could be any member of the school committee who can, if necessary, take the place of Car, of Dennis.
Correct.
Okay. Under number 12, Mount Everett Early College with Bard College at Simon's Rock, the chair will send a graduatory communication to Kevin Woglemuth for being the first non-faculty member, well, it's non-Simon's Rock family member. He is our faculty member to complete the certification. Okay.
And we could just say...
And did anybody else have anything? Okay, so with those changes, we'll do a roll call. Let's start. Kyle?
Yes.
Okay, Carl?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And Sarah?
Yes.
And Bonnie, yes. Unanimous, the minutes are passed. All right. Beth, you want to address enrollment?
No, because Lynette did not put it in for this meeting, so it would be on for next meeting.
All right, any miscellaneous correspondence?
Yes, so in your packet is the email that we received from the state during vacation week that said that our E and D was certified.
Oh, we have to approve that?
Yes, and so we do need a vote to accept that. So, the email's included because this is how they send it to us these days. There's no formal letter. And the attached is the excess and deficiency calculation signed off by our state auditor.
You see the very last page in the packet. I will accept a motion to approve E and D. Thank you, Carl's second.
I second.
That's Kim. All right, let's start. Kyle? If there isn't any discussion. Carl?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And Bonnie, yes. Okay. Anything else under miscellaneous?
No.
Student representative report. Do we have one?
We do. I see Jessica's on here today.
Excellent. Do we get...have an introduction?
Um, I'm just hoping...Jessica, are you, are you ready for your report?
Yes, I am.
Wonderful.
Thank you for doing it.
No problem. So, I don't really have too much to say just because we really haven't had, like, an in-depth student council meeting with all the grades, but what I do know is the senior student council, they are requesting to do an overnight trip for their senior trip. And I was told that we needed to get that approved by the committee, as well as the seniors are just finished doing their dine and donate to Baba Louie's, and that went very well. And I know that they continue to do the...
I'm good.
They want to do the middle school spring dance as another fundraiser. And then, they're...we're in the process of ordering the caps and gowns, which seem to be an issue right now because not many have ordered it, but I know that the student council again has to enforce the students to get on that since the deadline's coming up.
Okay. In terms...just to let you know, in terms of the trip, what happens is we have a formal process and the advisor will submit a, a packet to us with costs, dates, chaperones, et cetera. And we will consider it as soon as we receive it.
Okay, I'll let our student, our advisor know, but I was told just to bring, like, bring it up at the meeting.
Okay, thank you. So, as soon as you speak to your advisor, the forms are in, we can put it on our agenda. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Jessica?
What was the...yeah, Jessica, what is...what was the dine and donate at Baba Louie's? Got me curious.
Um, that was the seniors fundraiser for the month of February. It was, I think, held like February 16th. Yeah.
Are you planning any more like that?
Uh, we were planning to do a March calendar, but it, uh, I think it's interfering with some other fundraising that we were trying to do, but we are trying to do the middle school spring dance for the month of April before break.
And do you have any idea how successful the Baba Louie event was?
Well, it started from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. and through that, we got 20% of the profit, but we still have yet to hear back from the owner of Baba Louie's, but we had just contacted them recently.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much. Do we have a student spotlight?
Not tonight.
Okay. Public comment.
Hi, Public.
Hello, Ms. Public or Mrs. Public.
Hi, my name is Sarah Second and my public comment tonight is on the school calendar. There's a draft calendar that was submitted and I'm going to make a suggestion that we don't continue to hold half-days on the same day of the week. There's a lot of reasons for this and there's actually been a lot of great feedback from the teachers association and in the future, I would actually recommend when we do a draft calendar, to invite a representative from the teachers association to come and chime in. The first thing is that if a half-day is always on the same day of the week in the elementary school, that child misses the same special every day or the same music lesson, which can put you, you know, with other in-service days, seven to eight days of school time that's missed. That's seven to eight days of the same art class, the same trumpet lesson, the same gym class, the same chorus class. If you have two classes, that's a week and a half difference. It's a big deal. I, I believe, I'm not sure, the change from having them at the end of the week on a Friday was to hope that they were better attended. I'd love to see data if that was the case. My classes don't feel that much bigger on a half-day on a Wednesday than they did on a Friday, but it's in the middle of the week, all the time is really disruptive. It also interferes with our ski program, which is a great collaboration between a local business. It's only for the months of January and February. If we could rotate our half-days around and not always have them on a Wednesday, it would help kids in the elementary school balance their specials. It would help our ski program days not interfere on Wednesdays. It would not make the middle of my week as a teacher feel so disruptive just when you get rolling and I give extra help on Wednesdays. It's the middle of the week. Let me tell you, no kid stays on a Friday. On a half-day, I'm not missing them. And, um, so just something to consider and if you're not someone who has to deal with that half-day schedule all the time, these are things that just might not come to mind. So, in the future, I, you know, that we put out the feedback and we ask teachers for it and they give a lot of great suggestions. I'm also going to suggest that we find three days somewhere. Juneteenth is great, but it's really lousy to have to have a three-day weekend right before the end of the school year every year. We're going to continue this year. We're going to bump to June 20th. So, our last day, our last day is going to occur after a three-day weekend. That's hard, especially hard when you're giving finals that late in June and kids have to concentrate. If we could adopt something like Canaan does and we shorten our February break, have a four-day weekend and take three days back, we need to find three days somewhere so we finish a little earlier or we're going to continue to run into this Juneteenth, which is great, but not for schoolchildren who have a three-day holiday right before the last day or two days of school. Thank you.
The calendar always goes before the teachers.
It does and every year we give feedback and we've been giving, you know, the same feedback, so I'm...we're happy to give it earlier or, you know, I have these suggestions written out. I just feel like every year we're in the same thing where we keep, you know, we keep saying, "Please," you know, and this year, actually, everyone planned for our staff meetings to be Wednesdays, even childcare, because they've been Wednesdays for years and years and years. People arranged childcare and then they came out on Tuesdays and there was a whole bunch of us actually who were scrambling because we're like, "I didn't line up a babysitter for Tuesdays." So, just little things like that have a huge impact on us personally when we have to stay after and we try to plan for that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, um, let's move on. Business managers' report.
I don't know if he has one tonight.
Oh, wait, Chris, do you?
Yeah, actually, I'm sorry, I was talking to Mary from you. I apologize. I have no report for you tonight. I was up to my eyeballs in budget for the past couple of weeks, so no report this week.
I can't imagine why. Business with district member towns. Anybody who, of our people who are on the regional planning, have any updates from any of their subcommittees, et cetera? Did you receive official notice that it...this will not be on the May warrants?
I haven't received official notice. I don't think it would come to me.
Just because I had asked and I was told that people were informed that it will not be on the May warrants.
I think it was discussed.
It was discussed and it was approved.
Yeah, but my question was to Lucy, the issue of what...whether it's select boards, superintendent, finance had been officially informed, and I was told that they were, so I will follow up with that. All right. Anybody, any...Kim, from your committee, anything?
Which one's mine?
Finance.
You're on that lovely Friday morning.
Oh, for the Friday emergency...
Yes.
They don't have any decisions at the moment. They're still working through it. Some people are saying, "Why don't you put all the numbers together and then broach it?" They're still working on capital, last I knew. I didn't get to finish the last meeting in the last hour. Again, I have...
But you were good.
I have questions, lots of questions about cost because working in the industry, their figures are not accurate. So, um, it's, it's hard because I see the state data, I see, talk to people, and they're using a data that's figure that's been around since 2000 and some...
16.
16, and I keep getting...well, and I ask the question over and over, "When have you updated it like as a report?" Like, somebody has actually said, "In a report." Yes, that's it. And I never get an answer.
Yeah.
So...
That, that is...
That is very concerning to me. But again, the numbers keep fluctuating. Do we keep our existing debt? Don't we keep our existing debt? Because our debt is from, till 2032, if, you know, and then those numbers fluctuate and then all of a sudden, somebody mentioned that the cost to us is going to be, I think that was last meeting, 50%. And now they're reviewing it again because how did it become 50% responsibility for our five towns? And then somebody else made another motion, "Let's look at 6%." So, nothing so far. Nothing to bring towards the main committee on either capital assessments or future capital.
And the finance area seems obviously the biggest as they also continue working on the regional agreement, the different parts of that.
Yeah, and that's the committee you're talking about, the merger committee, right?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm on this committee for finance, too, and I'm like, "Am I confusing them?"
Anything from your committee, Jim? Any that you are on?
The educational quality committee. I guess one, one thing would be the, just a generalized comment that, that vocational education isn't your parents' vocational education, and I think we're not looking at the broader picture. There's lots of vocational ways now and that, in a sense, the, the early college program ties into that for all the kids who want to get those two-year degrees and it could help them get them off faster on those. The other thing is educational quality, which is, you know, what I did for my whole life, my whole professional life, and I, you know, I have not seen any data on how this consolidation would improve the education of the children specifically.
Okay. And then one else? All right.
Is anyone on their community outreach?
Yes, me. I'm...I get to have fun with that tomorrow.
Because I, I have not been able to sit in on one of those meetings because they happen at a time that's not convenient sometimes.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, that's tomorrow at 3:30. The, the problem, obviously, as you know, is one, they were very unhappy with our February 7th gathering, that it was not done with their, with the community outreach and, um, I was chastised.
I'll show up at 3:30.
And, um, yeah, there is major push in terms of how they're doing outreach. All right, chairman's report. I actually have a few things. One, let's start with a very simple one. And I...this comes from what we dealt, the issue of whether people being incorrectly elected or not. So, just ask if you'll pass this and pass this way. I'll just, if there are any extras, send them back to the...I don't know if you have enough there. So...
Good.
Good? Okay. Julie, so here's what the story is. It was the way I had originally said it. Everybody is legitimate. Now, I went through two things. First, I went with Lynette has been keeping a record. Number one. Number two, she had to deal with the electoral commission for the state prior to sending in, in August, who was running for what position. So, she has a chart that goes way back to like 2014, and Dennis and I are the simplest ones. Nobody, you know, we didn't stop. We stayed with the school committee and Sheffield was easy. And what you have there, the chart shows, for example, simple one, Carl was elected to a four-year term that will expire in 2026. Eggermont is where you have the first of the changes. Jim came on to fill the seat after Dennis passed away. In 2022, he could have run to complete Dennis's seat, but he chose to run for the four-year term, which meant he ran and took petition for the four-year term, was elected to that. And Kyle became a write-in. He's actually completing Dennis's spot. So, he's...will be up in '24. Kim has the honor of Monterey in the rotating scenario. We had Hannah Bracken who was elected to that position, but because of a change of job, she was no longer in our...she was...had to move. And then Laura came on and Laura was listed to run in 2022, but decided she is...was not going to run. And Kim was listed and ran and she gets to complete the term with a two-year term.
I actually won.
Right. You won, yes. And she won the seat and she...her term will end. It will be the end of Hannah Bracken's for '24. New Marlboro was a similar, where it was a switch-over. Sarah was a write-in to complete, um...
It should have been Carrie.
Oh, it should have been Carrie Ann Patrick, sorry. Where I wrote Hannah Bracken, that was Carrie Ann Patrick. So, what happens is, Sarah, you're completing that four-year term. Nancy originally was appointed to that term, but she then chose to run for a four-year term. So, she's listed as 2026. So, what you have there is really simple. And then you have, you turn to the back, David Teriot, he is completing a seat that was originally John Bruno's, who left because he had another job, he had to resign. And then Sheffield appointed Kara Smith to complete the term to '24. She only stayed till '22. David ran for the two years. So that so David's position will be up in '24 along with Art Bataki. So if you will look, there are five people who will be up in '24 and five people who will be up in in '26. Everybody is legitimate. It keeps us having as long, you know, while we're as long as we are our district, having five people up for election every two years. And the electoral commission totally agreed with the recording. And Lynette submitted all of this to the state, which she had to do in August, along with our certified, our having been certified. So does anyone have any questions on this? Carl.
So if we say that, and this is just projecting in the future, if there are no resignations on the current committee now seated, everybody who runs in 2024 will be running for a four-year term?
You got it. You got it. Which is what, you know, when you guys, when it was just when we switched in our district from appointed to elected and then said, hey, we don't want this happening with a whole committee reelected, when you guys who were involved in the in the design of the district, the idea was that we would never have a situation like we did this year with basically like nine people having to go through elections. It will be all for it's all four-year positions. And as you said, everybody who would run in '24, if there are no resignations, will be running for a four-year position. Yeah.
So they all cross, so there's always there's always a batch of five who
That's what is that was the design.
Yeah.
There's always will be
Staggered approach.
A staggered approach that would keep five human beings who have experience on our school committee.
For better or worse.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Now, the next is an issue that came, if you remember when we voted on the motion that was before us about allowing Lucy to speak at our meetings. At that point, I said, I thought it was supposed to be a majority of all present and voting. And as a result, the motion would not have passed. We had four yeses, three noes, and two abstains. A majority of present and voting would be five. Check with counsel, I was totally right. Therefore, our motion did not pass. I am making a suggestion, I've just Beth and I discussed this for a while. And I've discussed it with Lucy and I actually asked that she not be here for this meeting because I think, you know, it's really up to us to make the decision. I think that the the choice that you brought forward, Kim, at our last meeting was to have her, when there are updates that should be done, she would have a list of all of our meetings. If she feels there's something that she needs would like to update in person, she would be allowed to update in person and to take questions from the school committee. I personally think that that benefits us, bless you. I don't, I this is my personal editorializing, this is now in my chairman's report. I think it is to our benefit that we give her as chair the right to lifetime bring us information in a specified period of time if we have it on the agenda for a meeting. And that we as school committee members have the right to question. So Beth, do you want to add anything to that comment?
Nope.
Nope. So therefore, I told Lucy that I would bring it up to the full school committee. And I know it's the prerogative if the chairman and the superintendent want to put something on the agenda to be able to do it, I don't like to operate that way. I'd rather hear from the school committee what your thoughts are in terms of that before I get back to Lucy. Kim.
I don't mind her coming into our meetings and doing an update so that we can question her. But the way she broached it is that she should have the ability to do it whenever she wants. And that kind of throws off what we have to do as a committee. It's still our district. She's still just an elected person on a board that's looking into things. So it's we're, you know, it's not it's not something that has to it's a necessity. It's more of like, yes, you know, if you'd like to give an update, go ahead. Because we have stuff to do. It's like stuff.
The way I said to her, and to see if she would agree, is I would give her the list of all of our school committee meetings. So let's say next week, the ninth, we have a school committee meeting. She would let, for example, say, I feel that there are significant updates I would like. And I told her, it would only be like, you know, three to five minutes at max, that she would be able to say, yes, I would like to be put on the agenda for the ninth. And then we would have the right, in addition, I told her, to be able to ask questions. We would not have to submit ahead of time. This is just I think a courtesy, you know, I will not editorialize there, but it's that's who we are. We win our sportsmanship awards because of who we are. Nancy.
So the meetings, the regional planning commission, whatever it's called, meetings are inconsistent, but I think updates for the subcommittees are pretty consistent other than the ones that I haven't been able to make the meetings to. But I'm wondering if something to consider might be to invite her to come like every six weeks, you know, what we have meetings every two weeks, like every third meeting or something like that, rather than leaving it random or every two months.
Random, I would say, is because like the finance committee hasn't accomplished anything in like two months. So, you know, there's no update on it. And then I don't know if she has updates on anything else.
Oh, okay, I see.
So so it's it's everything's like a moving part and in motion. So you never know when they're actually going to accomplish something, you know? And then that gives her the opportunity, once she does accomplish something, to share it.
Okay, sure, that makes sense.
Anyone else have, yeah, Dennis.
Well, the only thing that I don't want to have happen is to have school committee meetings where, in effect, she would have an open pass to come here at any of them. You know, you know, and not that I don't want her to come to some of the meetings, but I I think it should be formalized in some fashion where there's a definitive number or process by which it has to be followed. That's all I
Well, the way I left it, given that, is that I would, if if we agree to it, I would give her a list of our upcoming meetings and that tell her that when you're looking at the meeting, the, I mean, she could be sitting in the audience the whole night if she wants to in zooming in. But if she wanted to do an update, she would indicate to me, I'd like to be put on the agenda for your item on the regional planning board for this date. And she knows already, she agreed to it, it would be no more than three to five minutes. And when you see the agenda, you would know that you would also have the opportunity to be asking questions. So she would only be speaking during that period of time. And it would be limited.
But I guess the the point that I still have some disagreement with you on is is I don't want that to happen every school committee meeting.
Yeah. That was exactly, that was the discussion that we had. She said, I'm not going, you know, it's
So I think it's up to us to set some level or standard by which we want that to be followed. Otherwise
If she asks me to be on the agenda, I can't
Go right ahead. You have to be recognized.
Go right ahead, you can be recognized, you're always recognized.
I was just thinking, she's going to ask you to be on the agenda. You could say, our agenda is really busy that night. You can't be on this week, but you need to be on next week.
Yeah, and actually
So I think that would cover what Dennis wants, is that you would have control to say, we already have a really full meeting.
I already said, it's not going to be every meeting. So if you look at the rest of the of the academic year, it gives us the ability, and I think Julie's comment, you know, there are times when Beth will have a major presentation, we don't want, because there will be a tendency for a lot of people to want to ask questions. She'll be short, the questions are the part. So I told her, in summary, even with questions, we don't want this going over fifteen minutes. And we don't want, and I also, and I don't know how you feel about this, I said, basically, she was not bringing the troops with her. This is she as chair and citizen of our communities, she as chair is being invited on these specified times. Nancy.
Robyn, I have a lot of those lines too. Is there, because I I have images of it getting, if not contentious, of it getting verbose on various and sundry different individuals, opportunities to speak. And I I'm talking about me and Carl, it's really simple. But but no, the question, what I'm where I'm going is if we know that that if we know that Lucy's going to be here in advance, we can have questions set to ask her. But they have to be, if we can really be conscientious about keeping the questions short and to the point, because I think a lot of the long questions that come up can be brought up in the regional planning commission board meetings, not here. So that's my question.
So in other words, what it will is you will have the agenda, and the agenda will say Lucy Prashker where on on that item line. And it we will set a fifteen-minute, basic fifteen-minute time allotment. And we will be conscious of curtailing of curtailing and getting our questions to the point.
Yeah, and then the other question I have, is there a shut off, a way to shut off the time if it does start getting over?
That's the job of the chair always, to control to control the time limit and use the egg timer.
All right, thanks.
Gives us the opportunity to ask questions in real time.
Yes.
And other people will be tuning into our meetings. And, you know, so it does give us the opportunity to ask questions for what she's saying. I sat through a meeting where that came up. And Lucy was like, well, at my discretion, I will take comments. And I felt that was kind of rude.
And and I think also, one of the things that does come up, Kim brought it up at last Friday's finance committee, subcommittee meeting. And I was sitting there and I want somebody to explain how this new building is being built for the amount that was from 2016, when everything I've been told, so it gives us the opportunity, as Kim just said, in real time to question that.
I'm not arguing it.
Okay.
At all, no, I'm not arguing it at all, I think it's a good idea, I think Lucy deserves the, I think Lucy deserves the opportunities.
What's his name is speaking?
But
When he directed it to me. I wasn't on the call.
But I I would
Okay, so can we just
Just control.
Okay, let's try it, we'll see how it goes. Is there any objection?
Well, I guess the other objection that I'll have to state is that there are people in that body who are not, quote, official members of the body, i.e. Jake Eberwine. I don't think that she should be allowed, for example, to bring Jake along with her.
But I, as I said, this is for Lucy, she is not to bring troops with her. Troops are allowed to be, you know, on Zoom. This is, she is the person who is making the presentation.
Well, I don't have a problem with her bringing other members that are actually appointed members of that committee with her. All I'm saying is, right now, Jake Eberwine is running the show.
Okay.
Okay, and I don't want to see Jake Eberwine in here.
But this is what, this is what we don't need to have the conversation.
To make it simple. This is, we are responding to a Lucy request. I don't think we need to, she has made it clear, she is the one who is asking to come. She is the one who is willing to do it within the parameters that we discussed that were in Kim's motion. So I don't think we need to preclude what she never brought up is what she wanted to do. So she just wants to be able to give a real-time update, if appropriate, and to respond to our school committee questions. That's the purpose of it. And she is not coming to every single meeting. She will be informing us prior to the issuing of any agendas for our meetings.
All I'm saying, I have no problem with that.
Good.
However, if Jake Eberwine shows up, I will ask Jake to leave. Period.
Maybe we can do a motion that specifies only Lucy Prashker, unless otherwise previously notifying the school committee that she would like to have
Do I have to make such a
Special guest? Okay, Carl has his hand up first.
Yes, Carl.
We're we are not presently discussing a motion that's currently before the committee, correct?
We have no motion.
Okay, well, the only comment I have on on this discussion is that there is an unfortunate imprecision in language being used. Dennis said, if Jake Eberwine shows up, and if Lucy if Lucy brings Jake Eberwine with him. Now, what does that mean? This is meeting is both in person and by Zoom. Lucy Prashker showing up is no different if she shows up via Zoom or is sitting here in the room. There's no distinction between an appearance. Jake Eberwine is certainly entitled to attend this school committee meeting by Zoom as anybody else is.
I said that a few minutes
Okay.
This is only, let's see if we can bring this conclusion. This is only acting on the original request that Lucy, and this is part of, you know, trying to address, and I think, given the hostility of some people, open hostility of some people towards our district, this is only addressing the request that she has to bring updates to the full school committee. All right, that's where we stand. Do we need a motion on this, or can we say that we will go with what's been described? You want to go?
I'm writing it down first so I can say.
I'm writing it down first, so I can say.
I would make a motion.
Yeah, I think we should have a motion.
Okay, so then how about, the motion is that Lucy Prashker will be provided with information of all the remaining school committee meetings scheduled for the year. She will inform the chair at least a week in advance of any time when, of a school committee meeting when she would like to make a presentation, an update. She will also respond to questions from the school committee. The plan, the hope is that we will be able to complete this in no more than fifteen minutes at any school committee meeting. All right, that's a thumbs up. Are you seconding my motion? Can you add to it? What do you want to add?
And this extends to Lucy Prashker.
Only.
Only.
Yes.
Any other person in hopes to address the school committee along with Lucy, we will have to be notified ahead of time. Like, say, if she wants to bring that guy that he mentioned. Jake Eberwine.
Yeah. He's entitled to make public comment from Zoom. So we could just specify, this is Lucy.
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none. We're voting.
You need a second, don't you?
You with a second.
Oh, I'm a second. Okay, sorry. Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. No, because I think there's some.
Okay, just to, you know, I'm a yes, it passes. I will contact.
Just Kyle?
Oh, Kyle, I'm sorry.
Yes.
All right, I apologize. Thank you.
Sorry.
I will give you guys an update on what happens. Thank you. Okay. Um, all right. Oh, I also had promised that I would contact MASC about a potential workshops. I have done that, and I'm waiting to hear back on that. And the other items, I'll save for next week. They're not that big. Okay. Let's move along. Superintendent's report.
Well, I think I've done enough damage for tonight, but my next project is gonna be to work on compiling the information and the questions and feedback from the said two February 7th meeting and kind of give everybody a, you know, a pile of information to do with which you may. So also, I did have the opportunity to go to the National Superintendent's Conference with a bunch of, with about a hundred Massachusetts superintendents all on the same plane, if they really wanted to.
Whoa.
Take us out, it would have been the nice direct flight down and back. But it was a really truly amazing opportunity and inspiring way to to experience the latest and greatest innovations and ideas about what the future of education should be. And I'm hoping to continue to share that with, first, the administration and the committee and the faculty and staff. There's a lot of really interesting, important research that's coming out, so I look forward to more of that.
Okay. Has any, apropos of what Beth just said, has anybody had any feedback about? Because I've heard people would like some follow-up to what we did on the 7th, and they're asking what we're planning on doing.
Well, I think we should get you the information, and then you can decide what that might look like, right?
Yeah, well, no, I wanted to hear if anybody had been hearing in the interim.
Oh, I'm getting emails in from people too, so I'd like to add that to the mix to say, maybe address it all in one point, you know, so we can have answers because, I mean, people are voicing concerns. And people are, you know, like, well, this would be great, but this isn't great, you know? So they have, like, some are mixed feelings, and, but there's not, they're like, none of them have information. They say that the website that these, that is always pointed to is not navigatable. They get confused by the eight-town region website, like, nobody wants to sit there and read all through it. I mean, people are busy. And that's the general consensus. They want somebody to talk to them, you know?
Okay, and I think that's something, if Lucy were here, it would be good for her to hear it, because it's, they put so much effort into that.
But if that's. I went to watch that video, and I. I didn't make it past ten minutes.
Which video?
The one with Lucy. I didn't. I'm sorry. And it's not, it's just, and it's not that she wasn't presenting well and stuff like that, it's just, it was, it just. Maybe I wanted fireworks or something. I don't know.
She did present well in that video, but you have to be willing to, you know, it's like the teacher's showing a whole period-long film.
And it's like.
Yeah.
I mean, there needs to be more of a shorter version.
Okay, so I think that's what we'll do. We'll wait. Do you have a sense? Do you think it'll be ready for next, next week's meeting?
Well, if I don't eat or sleep, it's possible.
Right, why are you bothering to do that?
Yeah, so, we'll see. I'll do my best.
I have to compliment you, since we're on video now. The job you did, and your team did, on putting together this budget report, was I am accounting phobic. I cannot face, and this was so clear, made so much sense. I really appreciate it, and the fact that you tied it to our mission and goals. It's really, hey, this is why we're asking for this kind of money, so thank you. I, as I read it, I said, this woman didn't sleep, nor did her leadership team.
That's true.
So do you have anything else while your eyes are still open?
Nope, not for, not for today.
Okay. Julie. Okay, Sandy. Really?
Two things. Last week during the break, I received an email from Dussie that they were giving us $39,350 more in our social, emotional, learning, and mental health grant, which was really great. So we completed, Chris and I completed the paperwork today and submitted that, so that's really wonderful. And it sounds like they're going to continue to fund into next year, and I've already kind of put that bug in my ear, so that's really terrific news. And I don't know if you, I can't bring it up on my computer, but I don't know if you saw on Facebook yesterday, there's a picture of some of us with one of our students who has rare disease, and it was Rare Disease Awareness Day on Tuesday. I don't know if you can bring that up on Facebook? So maybe you could just see it. It was so great, and his mom was so appreciative, and he was so happy to have us all there. But the colors associated is zebra. And so we, some of us had purchased shirts, and he was wearing a zebra on his shirt.
Oh, wow.
But it was really great. He, he's one in 50,000. There he is right there. So he's in one of our pre-kindergarten classrooms with Brenda Vandebogart, and here at Undermountain, and you'll see his staff that work with him there. That's our speech pathologist, Courtney Purnak, and the plaid, and then.
Oh, that's your whole team that works?
Two paraprofessionals there, Amy and Crystal, obviously myself, Mom and Shane, and Brenda Vandebogart. So I just wanted to mention that too, because it's.
That's really great.
It was really, that was great, and he's doing so wonderfully.
And as you know, I was so happy to hear compliments from my group about how great it is that you are addressing social, emotional, and learning.
Yes, it's so important. But that's my report, but I wanted to share that. This is great.
That's really cool.
Question, because you seem to be the source of this. Do you have anybody you could recommend they would be paid to help the regional planning board in terms of translating documents into Spanish? Somebody reliable, and they could be paid, they will be paid.
I do know of an organization in Pittsburgh.
Translating probably voluminous document, not major.
Not major. This is like a page here and there.
Oh, 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 I'm sure we, yes, I'm sure we can probably.
You'll get me, great, thank you. So I promise to do that, all right? Do you want to tell us anything about Simon's Rock and early college?
I don't think we have any special report today, but I believe our next early college gathering, which would be here, is on April 4th.
April 4th.
April 4th at 6:00, I believe, here.
And that was so wonderful, the sweatshirt, just.
Yes.
I was surprised, because you keep on hearing hardly any kids are involved. You had like thirty, forty kids there.
Again, I think people were working on some, you know, a latest flyer, I should say, or to talk about the difference between what it means to be a dual enrollment versus a pathway versus a wall-to-wall. There are very few number of actual wall-to-wall, which means every child in the district is, which, you know, contributed to us being able to do some of the things we were able to do with funding, because every child is experiencing that in some way. It is different, and it is all, and it is, you know, kind of who we are as we evolve, so.
And I love that, you know, when you put in the proposal, it was the best way to go to college is to go to college.
Well, that is true. That is, that is true. I didn't write that quote. That is a famous quote.
I know, but your co-conspirator did.
That's correct.
New business? Do we have anything there?
We don't.
Good, moving to unfinished business. The goals and action, Jim, you'll address that when we get to your committee. Go, right, okay. Bios and introductions.
She just keeps putting it back on there, yeah.
The terms of school committee members.
You did it?
We did it.
You did that?
We did the vote on request from the chairman. Okay, subcommittee reports. Boy, we're moving along there. Sarah did an incredible job chairing that finance subcommittee. Really? I'm not being facetious.
Okay, thank you. Well, we did meet Monday night, and we just went over the proposal highlights packet that Beth put together for us. So she showed us most of that, all of that tonight, so we just reviewed that, and that was it.
Okay. Community relations, Nancy?
Oh, my gosh, trying to get this. Subcommittee together, to get this darn thing together.
We are meeting. As far as I know, there have been no other dates for making it impossible to get together, nor whether, hopefully for next Thursday at 5:15 before the meeting.
Do you think 5:15 is enough time for us to.
I think it's a question of who can show up when. So the three of us can meet anytime, but I don't think, well, maybe Carl, I don't know about Sarah and Kim is the issue.
Any earlier than 5:15?
I'll have to talk to her, boss.
That would be a yes, okay.
I could do, I could do five.
Well, we could meet, or we could also get you guys up to date if you wanted to do.
Let's, I think you should announce and publish it. You cannot, you can't begin earlier without it being published that the meeting begins at five.
I haven't posted it yet, so.
So post it for five. Mm-hmm, okay. Dennis, anything on policy?
We're gonna have a meeting probably in two, three weeks. The superintendent has some additional policy work that she'd like to kind of lay out in front of the, of us first, you know? So other than, other than that, you know, because there, there isn't a whole lot of new policy work that's come out of MSC at all. I mean, in the last, in the last six months, you know, basically.
Personnel negotiations, thankfully not. Buildings and grounds, arts not here. Jim, your turn.
It's my turn. So we've had a couple of meetings, and, you know, Beth has really helped us with kind of aligning her goals with the school goals, with the, you know, with what happens out in the classes with the kids, which I think is really impressive. That's one thing that's happening. The other thing that's happening is that we've talked about involving, you know, how there's been changes in the personnel on this committee, and involving everybody in kind of getting us to know each other better and getting us to be more effective. So you have, Bonnie and Beth know of, have experience with a person who does school committee trainings. And I'm waiting to hear back, and we will contact her.
Yeah, that's presser. I've contacted her.
And see if we could do.
But do you have, remember, we agreed to two goals for the school committee?
At our meeting. Forgot what they were. I don't have the paper for you. I'm sorry.
You'll have them for next week, all right?
I'll have them for next week, yes.
Okay. We, in our meeting, if you remember, we decided that basically, given it's already March, two goals that we'll have, which mostly deal with our functioning and align with Beth's goals.
That was the force in the community.
Right, right, and our organization. You didn't write it down?
I did write it down, but I didn't bring it with me.
Okay, so you'll have it for next Thursday?
I'll have it for next Thursday.
It aligns basically with Nancy, what your committee is doing, that, you know, it's this community outreach and also our functioning. Executive Minutes review, Carl?
Nothing yet.
Okay, curriculum, you haven't called us. Well, it might be good, yeah, if you would, you know, right, all right. Any?
That's it.
Early childhood? What, any early, any, no, we haven't had. Okay. And you all received an email from me with our committees. We had a couple of switches, and we now have the ad hoc regional agreement review subcommittee. And we have Kyle, we have Carl, we have Dennis, we have David and myself. And if, for us to look at anything that we think is important in terms of our own regional agreement. All right, future agenda items.
Can I ask a question about the subcommittees?
Yes.
A general question about the subcommittee. Is it accurate that each of the existing subcommittees have had reorganization meetings since the November election?
No, policy has not.
And community relations has been trying.
And Nancy's been trying.
I have been trying.
Okay, because we're mandated to do that.
Yes, yeah, I've been following up and, and making sure everybody has on their agenda, the first order of business is to confirm the person as the chair. Okay. Yes?
The superintendent's?
Oh, you agreed to?
Yes, I agreed.
So you have to change it again.
Yes, you have to change it again.
Thank you for agreeing to do that.
It's okay.
All right, the major changes were Carl had agreed to go on the regional review, you know, because he's had experience with all that. As a result, we took him off of community outreach. Kim wanted to go on to community outreach.
No, they took him off of mine.
I thought I was, and then I wasn't, and then I am again?
You are again. No, so I made those changes, yes.
No, he came off of superintendent evaluation.
He came off of superintendent. And you're, that's right, that's where the fill-in is. So I will make a change again and send it out again. Thankfully, that was an easy form that Lynette did.
I did this.
Oh, that's why it was easy for me to do. No problem. Anything that anyone would like to list for future agenda items?
What are we doing to, like, talk to.
Sandersfield or anything like that? Would that be a future agenda item?
Not here.
Not here.
Um, we shouldn't get old, I've already asked, because Dennis had previous experience of that, and also to look at any policy guidelines, so we could deal in terms of that. All right, we don't have an executive session?
No, 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 I'm gonna, I'm gonna step in and say, I, I, I don't remember how we did the calendar last year, and I'm wondering if we should take up, or if that's not our place to take up Sarah Sickitt's recommendation.
It's not the place right now, so I just want to say that we always do incorporate feedback where we see, but, and it's only in draft form, so, so we haven't come back with any further suggestions. It'll come back in front of you when.
It's early in the, early in the year, and.
Yeah, no, I'm just, that's why I'm asking with the processes. I'm not asking for, I'm not asking for an answer. I'm just asking for the process.
Okay, seeing, yes, Carl, do you have something to add?
I have one question about future, then, this is something I brought up a few meetings ago. B, Guidance and College Report, that, does that, is it fair to assume that that include, that, that will be a report from the, from some member or members of the Guidance Office?
This item went on here directly when you raised the question.
Okay.
And Beth said there would be a complete guidance report, not only on college, but in guidance.
Okay, and, but we don't have a specific date for that. It's just a future item.
Exactly. It is a future item, but we had done, as I, I believe I said, you guys weren't on yet, but at the beginning of the year, I did kind of a year-long agenda of what could be expected. The guidance report was towards the end of the year, just when we laid everything out.
Okay, no, that, yeah, I don't have any problem with that, but it will be during this current school year.
It's traditionally, in the past few years, Beth's done it, and, you know, once we.
It's closer to May, you know?
Yep. Okay, and no one has anything to add? Do we have, we don't have executive session, correct?
We don't, no.
Excellent.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Carl, we're gonna start with you.
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
And yes.
Kyle.
Kyle.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes, sorry about that, so.
Really well-run meeting party.
And look at that before eight.